And it was a reminder that I'm not seventeen anymore and the one playing, I had to kind of tone it down a little bit. I wanted to be out there with them. That's a sense of pride for our community, not just our kids. So I do agree with the research and I think, you know what, it makes our kids who they are today and it'll build them for our future and that's what we want is strong, educated students.
Not seventeen anymore, huh?
No, I wish.
Wait till yours are seventeen. Joe Martin, you get to begin. Please address the general topic of community building. More specifically, what unites us? On which topics can we agree? Do you believe the citizens of the school district should pursue avenues to more unity? If so, in what specific behaviors will you engage to help move in that direction? Now, I am going to repeat this, just to give you a minute to think about it. Please address the general topic of community building. More specifically, what unites us? On which topics can we agree? Do you believe the citizens of the school district should pursue avenues to more unity? If so, in what specific behaviors will you engage to help move in that direction?
Here again contemplation before I start speaking, but, um, I, okay, Harvey, would you indulge me for a moment?
Well, depends.
I think the symbolism of reaching across the seat here to shake hands with Harvey, now, I'll back up a step. Harvey was gracious enough to let me come to two of his listening sessions and I think we've got opposing viewpoints on a few things, but I deeply respect what he thinks and what he says and I hope likewise. So, to live that, you've got to reach out to somebody and engage them and I will tell you, I learned a long time ago that God gave me two ears and one mouth and I try to live that way. It may not be apparent because I've never had a problem speaking, but truly would hope to use both ears and maybe twice as much as my mouth to listen to people and hear what they've got to say. The other way that I think, and if you'll indulge me in a little symbolism here, you know, is kids in school learn about a Venn diagram and if you don't know what that is, you can take two ideas or environments or groups of people and draw circles around them. And if in fact our community is divided, I don't happen to think so, but certainly we think differently on a couple topics. If Harvey's in a circle and I'm in a circle, they have an overlap. You know, we can think differently on some topics, but we think very much the same on a lot of topics. So you draw the diagram, you put the circles out there, you find the overlap. Those are the easy things and if those overlap are topics that we need to talk about, there's probably agreement on those, we can chart a path forward pretty quick. And that's what I think is the easiest thing to do first. And once you get people believing that you found the middle part that they agree on, then you engage them on the things that we don't agree on and you probably find out, there's some things that are pretty close to the middle, but maybe not quite. There's some things way out on the edge of the circle that we might not agree on and you, you find a way that you can keep working toward the middle and, and compromise on, on some issues and realize there might be things that we don't compromise on, at least not initially, until we start taking some of the other pieces away that we, that we don't have to deal with anymore. You know, another analogy that I like to use to help people draw pictures is, you know, when the, when the problem is complex and hard to find your way forward, I liken it to the adage of, you know, how do you eat an elephant? When the problem is as big as an elephant, how do you eat it? One bite at a time. And you take the bite out of the middle where everybody agrees on the fat, on the things that we can get moving quickly on.
I'm going to read it again, Shelley, I'm sorry. Please address the general topic of community building. More specifically, what unites us? On which topics can we agree? Do you believe the citizens of the school district should pursue avenues of more unity? And if so, in what specific behaviors will you engage to help move in that direction?
Okay, there's a lot of community building that needs to occur in order for us to get back on the right page together. The things that unite us are that we want to put our students first. We want our kids to have the best that they can have. We want them to have opportunities. We want them to be successful and we want them to be good citizens once they leave our school district. We want success. Everybody wants success. You want success in life. You want success in the future. You want success in deciding on your careers. But we want our kids and our teachers and our administrators to succeed. Nobody wants a failing school. Nobody wants a school put on a watch list and we have successful schools in our district. We are great when it comes to our state reports and what you hear from people in the community whose kids go to our school. They think they have a great school. They have great opportunities and they have great resources. We have pride. We have pride in each of our schools. If you go to Harmony, you hear how great it is at Harmony. I went to the West parent meeting a couple weeks ago and the things they're doing at West and the involvement that they have with their parents were just, you know, tremendous and how they feel. You go to East, you're going to get the same thing. Mrs. Kramer will fight for whoever they need to fight for to get what she needs at that school. Northside, you got all the different wings going on and all the different, it's like a large city. So again there, and then the middle school and high school do the same. So we take pride in whatever we have. We take pride in our community. Taxes. Taxes unite us on everything. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. I don't want to pay more taxes, but if it's for the putting my students first, I'm willing to pay those taxes. Our community unites us. We all have to work and operate and, you know, be neighborly and be with our community and support our community. And then we put high standards for our teachers, for our staff and for our students. And I'd like to say that we put high standards for our parents. We want our parents to be involved and to come into the schools and volunteer and do the things that you, you know. I used to know all my parents and it's very few that I know my parents anymore because it, it just, it's scheduling and the busyness of everybody's lives. The citizens avenues, I think the sound off is really hurting the image of our community. People in Janesville-Balloyd are reading the sound offs and seeing what's being put out there that are very negative. They're very derogatory. That's a bad avenue and the same with some of the things on the Gazette page. Social media. People are putting names of people out there. They're attacking personally, staff members, board members, community members. That's driving the hate and the negativity and the discourse among our community members and not bringing us together. Things I would do would look for valid options. Lots of people come and do public forum and have criticisms of us, but they don't have any solutions to go with us. So we're creatively trying to look for valid options and viable options that we can afford. Coming up with partnerships in our community, whether it's through MAC, whether it's through other schools, co-op being with other schools for programs so we can afford the extracurriculars and the co-curriculars, partnership, partnering with Black Hawk Technical College and M A T C and Whitewater and U Rock, so we have those options. Creative spending. We got to look for creative ways. Almost every school has zero budget increases when it comes to teachers ordering their budgets for the next year. So teachers have to get creative in spending what they have and figuring out ways that they can support their students. As most of you know, many teachers spend their own dollars to provide what they need for their students. So our district has to look for creative ways, whether it's through donations, partnering with companies, advertising signs, which many schools are going to, all those different options.
All right, Brian. Your attitude toward community building and what would you do to help move in that direction?
So, I, yeah, I definitely think community building, we, we do need some of that and I think it's very important. The one, some of the things that I think unite us as a community is the passion and caring that all of the citizens within the school district has, have for the, the, the school district and our, and our students and our teachers, as well as the support staff. I think everybody would agree that our, the people that work in our school district and the students are, are exceptional and everybody wants them to be successful in whatever they endeavor to do, especially the students after, after, after they graduate. Do a lot of passion, a lot of passion because everybody wants what's best. Same, at the same breadth, I would also say everybody wants what's best, but they also want to make sure that they, they have a balance of what's best for the students and what's best for the community because it is a, a system and, and you can't just focus on one and not the other. As far as what avenues we should pursue for, for unity, one thing I have, I, I'm going to have to disagree with Shelley a little bit because we do have community members that come to the board meetings and have comments and they do have some criticism. However, there have been plenty of solutions that have been offered by the citizens in, in the community. I cannot tell you how many different suggestions or recommendations I've heard. So there is a lot of, of engaged citizens within our school district that do have our proposed solutions to some of the things that we, we are, we're challenged with right now. I think the big thing to, or the big avenue that we have to work towards as far as, as unity within the community is get on the same page. Let's all you agree on what the data is. Let's all agree on what a need is and what a want is. And I think until we, we do that, you know, it's going to be a challenge, but I, I think it is possible. I'm very optimistic. And like Joe said, there's always a middle ground that, and that's where we really need to start, is in the middle ground where everybody agrees.
Diamond, your thoughts on community building?
Okay.
Pretty soon it's just going to be Harvey.
I really believe that small victories can sometimes make a bigger impact. And I think one thing that everyone in this room that can, can agree on or come to is, and stuff we've talked about all night tonight, is safety and ADA compliance. I think if we took one of those topics first and as a community, we decided what we needed to improve on with those topics, which we've, I think, done a really good job. I've gone through a lot of the paperwork on, on the board's website and we put that into place and we take that small goal and we, we make it achievable. We achieve it and everyone feels victory in it. That, that changes your culture. It changes your buy-in and I think that's one of the first things we need to do is get that buy-in. I think another thing that we all agree on is that our educators are above probably the rest of the area. We have the, one of some of the best educators. I've had a chance to meet with a lot of them and say hello and, and hear their passion. Brian's right. The passion in our district is above any district that I've ever had the experience of working with. But with that, we do need to work on our community building. And I think the first part of that is really being open. I, you know, Danny, this, today started off very well and I'll, I'll attest to that by saying that we need to speak to each other with open minds and open hearts and not come to that conversation with the, the decision you already had made up. I think people jump to conclusions or have opinions about each other or what you think someone's views are. Joe, you know, Joe attested to that, that people may think they know how he thinks. You don't know unless you really talk to each other and talking is, is open and it's wanting to reach a conclusion that you haven't already preset. So I think we need to be open-minded. I think we need to put our guards down and stop pointing fingers at each other and realize that until we both want to, both sides or three different sides or the entire community wants to come together as one and have one solution, it might not all be the things that you want, but if it's a collaboration of what we all want and what we all need for our school, I think that would be a good step. And we need to set examples. I have been to board meetings. I have listened to people come up and talk and open comments. Sometimes it's with a solution, sometimes it's not. But we need to be mindful on how we approach things. My grandma always told me when I got in trouble, it wasn't exactly what I said, it was the way I said it. And I think that's a good lesson that we could all continue to use today. And with just community as being a community member, not someone running for the board, but hearing it as I've ran for the board, I've heard a lot of people suggest that, why don't we private fund for things for the school district as we have a lot of needs. I've been to a lot of fundraising events here in Milton. I, I could say so myself. I think our community does a very good job of raising money for our organizations that are really important. And I, I could see a committee being formed to do something like that for our schools too, to try to get that funding that way and offset all these needs for referendums. So, and the fundraising events are always some of the funnest ones. I've had the ability to attend and, and meet with the people at. So that would be my take on it. So, thank you.
Harvey?
That's what you did. I think there's a big need for community building. To start with, I would say that I don't think we have as much division as what either the newspapers or some people seem to believe we have. This community is good about getting together to accomplish things. I'm a docent at the Milton House, so I appreciate the fact that when the Milton House fell in in 1949, that the community didn't make the decision, well, let's replace it. Let's, let's build something else there. It's not worth saving. They came together to, to make that viable, to make it a museum. When the community needed a new police department and City Hall, the community supported that, came together to make sure that that happened. When the library needed to be renovated, even though that was done with private funds, the community supported that effort, came together to get us a great new library. So the community is ready and willing to cooperate as long as they know what the goal is and that it makes sense. And this is where, where this issue, I guess, hasn't been addressed by the other speakers here, is that, again, I said at the top, that the, the common theme I heard was change. And one of the reasons for, for this request or desire for change is because the community no longer has trust in the current board that's making these decisions. There are two, two ways in which a school board normally operates. One is that the board sets priorities, communicates those to the community and then reports on their progress towards achieving those priorities. The other method is, is the board works with the community to set those priorities and then reports back. Either model is viable, but if you don't have a board that is either trusted by the community or you don't have a board that works together to achieve goals, you aren't going to, you aren't going to make any progress. So, going back to my original statement, what I've constantly heard is the need for change. And it's not just the need to change direction, to change, change priorities. It's the need to change the people because we don't have people that are willing to work together. All we have to do is go back just two weeks and see where we, we've had people accusing other people of inappropriate behavior, censuring them, offering to keep other people from future board meetings. And this isn't the way we're going to build trust or we're going to build cooperation. And before we can do, before we can move ahead and decide what the, what the solutions are, what the facts are, what we're going to do going forward, we need to have a united board. We need to have a board that the community respects and, and that the board respects them.
All right, here's where it's going to get fun. We have a lot of input from the audience and a lot of questions, so we will limit the responses to one minute. As you know, Danny's got her finger on the trigger. So, we begin with Shelley Krulhanke. I'm going to start with a sure one. They get harder. What in your opinion were the reasons why the two referendums failed to pass?
One was, well, there's a couple different things. I think the understanding of the referendum, the first one, was part of it. I don't think people realized it was all-encompassing, that it was going to affect every single building in the district, that it would affect all of our facility needs that we have right now that came up at the last couple board meetings, that it would affect K-12 spacing for all of the students. In both referendums, people were focused on, I heard it's a field house. I heard it's a Taj Mahal. I heard it's an Olympic-sized pool. I heard it's, you know, whatever, instead of looking at the big picture. And the dollar amount was obviously a concern for the community for both of them. I felt like with the second referendum, we came down and eliminated some of the things that were issues, but then we weren't meeting the needs of all the buildings. We weren't addressing East. We weren't addressing new learning spaces at the other schools.
And it goes fast.
All right, Brian. What in your opinion were the reasons why the two referendums failed to pass?
I'll make it real nice and easy now. And I'll say it's, it was the dollar, excuse me, the dollar value. They're, they're, both were too expensive and to, the first one was definitely way too extravagant. And I think the second one, very expensive and very, very little creativity as to putting some of the solutions that our community has offered upfront. I've said this before and I'll say it again, Milton School District is not a wealthy community. We're in the bottom third percent, or bottom third of, of districts in the state of Wisconsin when it comes to property value versus the number of students. So to me, it was the money and it was a lot of the extravagance that went along with it.
All right, Diamond, the reason the first two referendums failed to pass?
I won't use my opinion. I'll use the information I've gotten from the community as I've knocked on doors. I've reached out to about, I think, close to a thousand residents at this point. And I've got a lot of different answers, but the two that I got the most, one wasn't money. It was the communication of how the referendum came to start and where it ended. We do have a communications director. We do have a board. We have a superintendent. We had people, this principle is, a lot of people are involved in communicating what the referendum was. But the people that I talked to said that it wasn't communicated to them in a way that they understood it from start to finish. And there was a lot of questions that I was asked that I didn't have the ability to answer. I went back and found answers and gave them to them. But just because we try one way doesn't mean it's the right way and we need to keep trying to communicate it in ways that our community members can understand and understand what the true impact is. The second was money and we're all taxpayers. So everyone feels that and, but if you understand the budget, then you understand where it needs to come from.
Harvey?
Basically, I think there were two main reasons why it failed. One, you can go all the way back to the survey and, and the community was specifically asked what they would be willing to support. They were offered three different options. The community was quite clear on what they were willing to support. And beyond that, the board went ahead with something far more extravagant than that. When they came back with the second referendum, I think the community felt annoyed that we've tried to give the board an answer. We voted down the first referendum. We've spoken at public forums. We've written letters to the editor and yet, here we are again with another referendum. And from what I've heard after, after the second referendum failure, when the board was kind of researching amongst themselves, what, what, what would we do wrong? What, what do we need to do to get a referendum to pass? The talk continues to come back to, there will be another referendum in this district. And I, I think that annoys the people and the fact that the people feel like they're not being involved in the decision-making and they're not being heard.
All right, Brian, you get to start this question. It's kind of a follow-up. What about Joe? Oh, Joe. Sorry, I didn't see you there. Try to make it shorter than the question.
Yeah, I'm, you know, my opinion on why it failed, why they failed versus what I've heard from people, it's all over the map. And I can agree in part with everything that's been offered. There's a multitude of reasons. You know, I have a personal viewpoint on the very first referendum because if you'll remember, it was two questions. When you flipped your ballot over, that presidential ballot, they were on the back, or at least they were of mine. The first one was two and a half million dollar for operational purposes. The second one was a facility, facility referendum for eighty-seven million. I know there are people that don't understand the distinction and two and a half million dollars has way less sticker shock than eighty-seven million dollars. I know that factored into some folks. So, we didn't do a good enough job helping people understand what those distinctions are and what they meant. And likewise, to propose the second referendum, I, I think folks felt like, you know, here again, some folks felt like we cut too much. Some folks felt like we did a poor job of coming up with the new number. There's a multitude of reasons.
All right, Brian, kind of a follow-up. Please outline an alternative to building a new high school that addresses the facility needs of the district's seven buildings.
Yeah, so, there's a, a number of steps that need to happen. And I'll just go over them as quick as I can in thirty seconds I have now. One thing we have to do, and I've been saying this for at least a year and a half now, is we actually have to prioritize our needs so we know what a need is and what a want is. So we definitely have to go forward and start that, that process. The other thing we need to do to kind of stop the bleeding is we really need to put an open enrollment ceiling on a cap so that we don't overcrowd our, our current facilities. The, the other thing that we need to do is we need to start a new fund, a capital improvement, long-term capital improvement fund. It's a, I believe it's a Fund Forty-Six where you can put in money and it doesn't go against the state aid, but you can use it in, for only capital improvements. And the last thing is another sub-fund in Fund Twenty-One that people can donate to.
Hey, we're rolling through. We got a lot more questions. Don't worry. Diamond McKenna, please outline an alternative to building a new high school that addresses the facility needs of the district's seven buildings.
Got it this time, sorry, Mark. We need to be creative with our budget. I think we need to reanalyze how we budget. You can, if you're, been doing it the same way for a long time, sometimes it's hard to look at it differently. So I think bringing in a fresh perspective and analyzing budgets in a different way can help you find money. Second of all, I think, kind of opposite of Brian with open enrollment, we actually have more students that open enroll out of our district than open enroll in. And I think it's more important to address why our students are leaving because as those students leave, we also lose funding. So, keep your students here and you have more money to use to help build your schools and make them better. But most importantly, we, until we have a referendum that does pass, we need to look at the budget we have now and how we can change that to meet our needs today.
All right, Harvey, alternatives to building a new high school that addresses the facility needs?
All right. Again, I think we have to take a look at everything. Everything has to be on the board, including open enrollment. I think we have to look for creative solutions to the problems, not just referendum or borrowing money in order to solve our needs. We've talked about community members who have offered solutions to the, to the facility needs that we have. I'm aware of a particular community member who recently has done some measuring up at the high school and is going to propose a plan to the school to create new, eight new classrooms up there. I think we have to look at people that have other solutions besides the architect that we paid money to and the, and the contractor that we paid money to because then we're tied to the, just those solutions. We aren't looking beyond those solutions. And I think we have to include the community in any solution that we're, we're coming up with. Again, not, not promoting, promoting a certain solution from the top and then asking them to get behind it, but getting their opinions and their, their advice beforehand.
Hey, Joe.
The alternative, to me, I think I hinted at it earlier. The, the common ground that folks in the community have, have shared is the first thing that I would, I would try and pick up on to improve our buildings. That's related to the safety, the ADA accessibility, some of those things. Referendum's an ugly word, but folks, that's where we're going to have to get the funds from. We already operate at an operational deficit. That's what the 2.5 referendum we passed helps us cover. So pulling money out of there, I mean, if you can pull a rabbit out of the hat, good for you. But I don't think we can take monies out of things that I think are being scrutinized already. I don't think there's any, you know, fluff that we can automatically divert to fixing these buildings. So, my solution is to fix the buildings we've got in as fast a manner as we can and restore the pride that we've all got in this school and community. And then we'll take the second step after that.
Shelley, alternatives to building a new high school that address facility needs?
Okay, the board has received input over the past ten years from the community, various committees, staff, administration, architects, students, construction firms. The board was elected to make decisions for the district and extensive time and money has been spent over the last ten years determining the needs of students and staff. The board needs to take that information, which we started with the step with the strategic planning committee two weeks ago, to relook at our list and look at what's been compiled and break it down by buildings to see what can be accomplished and what the community is going to support. Proposed referendum at this point will not get the Milton School District ahead of our other districts. We're just trying to keep us in the race and keep us even with the schools in the Badger Conference. Our schools deserve to be the best and have the greatest opportunities to give them. Our schools deserve to be the best and have the greatest opportunities to give them. Facilities needs are one thing, but student needs are our priority. Our K-12 space needs are what are going to drive our facility needs. We need space. Open enrollment's not a dirty word, it allows us to have programming and staffing.
Diamond McKenna, you'll be first on this question, and it's kind of left over from the primary, but we didn't ask it then, so I'm glad we're getting to it now. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards is advocating for legislation to require the net reduction in state aid to districts due to the statewide voucher program be annotated on property tax bills. Do you agree with the WASB, and if so, are there other things that ought to be disclosed on the property tax bill? I sure can. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards is advocating for legislation to require the net reduction in state aid to districts due to the statewide voucher program be annotated on property tax bills. Do you agree with the WASB, and if so, are there other things that should be disclosed on the property tax bill?
I will begin with being honest. I don't have a lot of information on this, it's not something that I have read up on in the past, so I'm going to just kind of go with my gut on it. You pay taxes, and you should know where your money is going to. I don't know if putting that on your tax bills is going to impact or make a difference in what that is. So, I'm going to actually go home and write down this question as you ask it four more times, so I can have a better answer for the community on that, because I don't want to sit up here and say something that I'm not really able to stand behind. So, I appreciate the question, it allows me to educate myself further, and I will put out a statement on that question on my Facebook page.
Well, as with a lot of these questions, they're kind of pointed to what some people have concerns over or are angry with. Wisconsin Association of School Boards advocating for legislation to require the net reduction in state aid to districts due to the statewide voucher program be annotated on property tax bills, do you agree? And if so, are there other things that ought to be disclosed on your property tax bill? Harvey?
I think as transparent as they can make the tax bill is great for taxpayers, because it allows them to have input through their legislators as to what's important to them. If I understand the bill properly, and again, like Diamond, I haven't researched it, I haven't heard a lot about it to this point, but I would say that this is another area where the school districts are being hurt because of the voucher system. The voucher schools are being treated just like the public schools, and it's drawing money away from the public schools. And so, I'm not in favor of continuing funding voucher schools as well as the schools my granddaughter attends.
So, Joe, do you think they ought to be telling you what you're losing to the voucher program on your tax bill?
Yeah, and I have to agree with the previous folks that commented here, don't have a real big background on this issue, I think I understand it and its basics. Including it on the tax bill is fine, I'm all for transparency and whatnot, with a caveat. We understand it relatively little, and I'm going to opine that most folks looking at their tax bill would understand it even less. So, if they want to go do the research and find out why that deduction is there, good for them, I'm guessing most folks won't, so I see a problem with that. Including it on there is not a bad thing, people can certainly know that. Might be a piece of data that the district could comprehensively look at and see, are we getting a lot of kids vouchering out, and is there a reason for that? You know, I foresee that as a benefit maybe way down the road, but I'm in favor of disclosing it. If it's the law of the land, if it's something people can do as a choice, absolutely. Let us know what those dollars are and where they're going.
Shelley, voucher figures, and should we know what they are?
Yes, I'm in favor of it, and I actually brought it up to Tim probably a month ago. There's a lot of school districts in our area that are adopting language for their board and making it, not a policy, but a statement, that they're going to support this proposal. On your tax bill, you have your city taxes, so I think people are confused between their Milton taxes, Janesville taxes, whatever, and then where their school district taxes are going, because I hear always say, Milton schools are, you know, upping our taxes. Well, it might have been your city of Janesville taxes, or your city of Milton or township taxes that also took a hit there. Right now, Milton does not, the last I knew, have any voucher kids going out, so there would be a zero reporting, but there are a lot of districts in Rock County that are, and Beloit is one of them, the city of Beloit is one of them being hit by some of the parochial schools. And we do not have very many private charter schools, and I think people are confused with public charter, like Janesville has, versus private charter. And they need to also look at technical school, Blackhawk Technical has an amount on your tax form also in the school districts.
You know, kind of like the gas gauge, I don't like to read my taxes, you know, whatever it's going to cost. Brian?
Yeah, so, I agree that with the WASBC, I do agree that that should be printed on the tax bill, because as taxpayers, we should be, know where our tax dollars are going, and if our district is going to lose state aid because of vouchers, we should know that as well, so that we can at least, you know, talk to our representatives as concerned citizens and being as educated and informed as possible, so I am in agreement with that.
All right, we'll go to an easy one. And Harvey, do you believe it is appropriate to have a bus take students to the Milton Area Youth Center after school? Otherwise, notice Macy, I think.
I would agree with that simply because if we're talking about safety for our kids, which I made a big part of my agenda as to what I would do if I got on the board, I don't think we want kids just leaving school in an unsupervised setting. Some kids may walk home, but we know that that's where they're headed. But those kids that are going to after-school activities, whether it be at the school itself or whether it be, in this case, at the youth center, we want to make sure that those kids get there safely. And so, if busing provides that ability to make sure that they arrive there safely, then I think we need to do that.
Joe, is it appropriate to have a bus take students to the Milton Area Youth Center?
Yes. I agree with almost everything Harvey said. The Milton Area Youth Center's a great, here again, it's a great community asset, and the more kids we can facilitate and help to take advantage of that, the better, so great idea.
Shelley?
I'm in support of it, but I guess my parents could question whether buses are going to take their kids to daycares, whether they're going to have accountability, are we liable for the kids once they get to the youth center? The parents who buy a seat, and the parents who can't buy a seat, do they also get transferred? So, I guess I would have to know more questions and answers to some of those things. And school choice kids aren't allowed to ride our bus system, so are they allowed to ride the bus to the youth center? So, I just, I don't know the answers to those questions, so I'd want to know that first before I, but I would be supportive of that.
Brian?
I would be in support of that for the simple fact that it is, would be a safety issue to me, and so, I would support it.
Diamond?
I would also support it. I've had the opportunity to go there and see how great of an organization it is and how those kids are being impacted. I think it is a safety concern, especially for the younger ones, and weather, it's just not a very safe thing for kids to be walking in super cold temperatures. I think it might increase the amount of students that will attend there. From students that I was talking to when I was there visiting, a lot of them said that's their safe place. It's a place where they sometimes get dinner, or they always serve dinner, a hot meal. So, I think that's very important. I know that in Janesville, they have the Boys and Girls Club, and they try to get their students that come to that after school to pay a dollar to try to help offset the cost, and I know busing is a cost, so I think there's ways to offset that as well if we think creatively and outside the box, but I do support it.
All right, Joe, you get to answer this question first. Understanding what constitutes a conflict of interest is important for all members of the board. What issues might arise that you think may constitute a conflict of interest for you, and what would you do about it?
I can't think of an issue that would give me a conflict unless, yeah, I can't think of one. Obviously, I gave you my background, I'm self-employed, you know, farm background outside the community. The business of the board doesn't overlap with almost anything that I do professionally, so, you know, if it got to the point of the FFA kids asking about what type of corn to plant in the greenhouse, maybe, but that's a pretty far reach for me, so I don't see much of a conflict.
Shelley, understanding what constitutes a conflict of interest is important for all members of the board. What issues might arise that you think may constitute a conflict of interest for you, and what would you do about it?
We've talked about this in our trainings with our school district attorney, Shayna Lewis, saying that any kind of conflict of interest would be something that would directly be advantageous to your family, either monetarily or some other reason. A family business, or if you are directly servicing the school for something, and your family would be directly impacted and receive funds or something for that. It has occurred for a couple of different votes we've had in discussions for a couple of our board members, and they asked to refrain from the discussion and to refrain from the vote, and so, they're not even in the room when we're talking about that, and it works out because they're being professional and they're, you know, speaking up that that could be a conflict of interest. The only one I talked about at the primary was my dad and brother's business, which I have nothing to do with, when they put in a bid one time. I saw it, and I saw it after the fact, so I would refrain from that.
Brian, would you have any conflicts of interest, and how would you handle it?
Well, I'll actually be honest and say that I don't, at least at one point, didn't think I would have any conflict of interest, but I always felt that it should be that if there is any type of conflict of interest, or even giving their perception of conflict of interest, that I should abstain from a vote. Now, saying that, I will tell you that I just recently realized that I was guilty of conflict of interest about two weeks ago. When the board voted to censure me, I voted on that, and that was a conflict of interest, and I just realized it. As another board member that's on this panel also voted, and it was a conflict of interest there as well. So, although I try to not give the procession of conflict of interest, I am unfortunately guilty of it, but I've learned from that, and I'm going to continue to not have conflict of interest.
Sorry, you've been censured. All right, Diamond, what might be a conflict of interest for you, and how would you handle it?
I'll very much piggyback on Shelley, I think she did a very good job of describing what that means and what the legal terms for the district is currently. I own a business, or my husband and I own a business, and we have done work in the past with the school district. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I can clear that up. I've never taken, or my family or our business has never taken a dollar from the school district. We actually do the opposite. We provide them with value, we provide them with monetary value for their used electronic equipment. We currently aren't in any working relationship with the school district, other than helping them with their students and maintaining or gaining jobs in the community. And if I was on the board and technology questions did come up that had to do with the trade-up program, I would refrain from those decisions and not be part of that as board members have done in the past.
And finally you, Harvey?
Well, like Joe, I can't really think of an incident where I would have a conflict of interest. I mean, that's partly one of the benefits of being retired. I don't have a business or an economic interest that would cause a conflict of interest. The only thing that might arise is if I had a different opinion from another board member, and it ended up into a censure situation like we had two weeks ago, and I was running for election, I would recuse myself from being involved in that vote, and I think that's as good an example as I can give. That would be the only instance.
All right, Shelley Kroll-Hanke, this is a two-part question. Still only 60 seconds. Have you been in the high school during a school day, and whether or not would you be willing to participate in a pre-arranged school board candidate-only tour of the high school during an active school day?
Yes, I found myself at the high school in many opportunities, especially with my son. I was there quite often for the school day times, and I obviously work in a school during the school day, so I know what the population, it's not Milton's population, but our middle school, high school's connected, so we have quite a few students going back and forth. I would definitely participate, because I think a lot of people who did the tours of the school did them at night, which was a great opportunity to see the facilities, but it is not realistic to what's there during the day. And for the misconceptions that things were made up and posed and different things like that, I think that would put that to rest, and they'd have an opportunity to see what is going there and what's going on.
Brian, have you been in the high school during a school day, and would you be willing to participate in a pre-arranged tour?
Yes, and yes.
Yes, I've been there on many occasions in the last few months during school hours, and I think it would be a great thing for candidates to go together and take that tour together, because it'd give us a chance to collaborate effectively and have open dialogue and communication and understand what each other's viewpoints are on it, so we have an understanding of each other as well.
Harvey?
I have been in the schools during the school day, not for a while, and so, I recently called the principal, Bill Horn, and arranged a tour for myself. I think it would be beneficial, and, what was the second part of the question?
Would you be willing to join in a pre-arranged tour during the active?
Oh, yes, certainly, certainly. As I mentioned, I'm doing one on my own, but I think if I got on the school board, I'd be, I think it'd be a great thing for the whole board to go, in order to come up with solutions to the problems that are facing the district, so I think that'd have very much value.
And finally you, Joe.
Nope, never been there, not interested in going. Ah, you are listening. Being facetious, obviously. I have a student there, I have had numerous opportunities to be in the building, and will continue to do so, and would welcome the chance to do it with any other group of folks that were willing to do it.
All right, last question before the closing statements, and this will be for Brian. So, what was your favorite subject in school, and why?
Jim. Jim and mathematics. Math was one of my favorites, just because I liked problem solving, and to me, that's kind of like what math is, trying to figure out values for letters, it's kind of funny.